I'd like to say good evening to everyone. Welcome to the board meeting here at DeJohn Middle School. And now we will go through the procedures and we will do the pledge allegiance and then the land acknowledgement. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
We recognize the representees on the lands of the Chinga, Wimwwekma, Harkin, Aloney peoples, and acknowledge them as the first inhabitants of the land we currently occupy.
All right, thank you. Now, welcome once again to tonight's meeting. We're about to go into closed session. But before we do, the board is here to receive public comment on any closed session item that is agendized. The board would then adjourn to closed session and reconvene an open session to continue with the regular agenda at 6:30 PM. If you are attending the meeting in person here at DeJohn and you wish to make a public comment now on a closed session item, you would need to submit an orange request to address the board forum to indicate your desire to speak participating by Zoom. You would need to raise your hand by clicking on the appropriate icon in the Zoom app or by pressing star nine. If accessing the meeting by phone, there is no yielding a time to another speaker and there is no substitution of speakers permitted. Please finish up the orange card, come in card. Now, if you are here in the audience and if you are in the Zoom or attending by phone, please get in line to speak by raising your Zoom hand now. To access translation of the agenda, click the top of the webpage using the word English for translation into multiple languages. Meeting interpretation services are available by Zoom by clicking on the globe icon at the bottom of the screen. Due to the Brown Act, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. Please note that the order of business may be changed without notice. Now we would do the roll call.
President Christian.
Present.
Trusty Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy.
Good afternoon, President.
Trusty Reckler.
Good afternoon, President.
Trusty Phillips.
Present.
Trusty Smith Folds.
Good afternoon, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Good afternoon, President.
Thank you. All board members are present and accounted for, sir.
All right, thank you. Now, we will proceed on for public comment for closed session items, disclosure items to be discussed in closed session, government code 54957-7. And then we will go to recess. And so what we discussing is liability claims, public employee appointment, public employee performance evaluation, public employee discipline dismissal, release complaint, and conference with labor negotiators. And that will be it and we will adjourn back into open session. And at this time, we would go into, are there, oh, are there any public comment for these closed session items?
There is no public comment.
Okay, and if there's no public comment, we will reconvene at 6:30 back here in the auditorium. Thank you. I'd like to say good evening. We will be starting, we're still in closed session, so we'll start at 7:15. So we will still be in closed session up until the end. I'd like to say good evening. We will still be in closed session, so we'll be finished about 7:45.
Closed session. We are extending closed session until 8:30. So we will be out at 8:30 at this time. Thank you very much. And Hannah says, if you don't mind reposting it with 8:30 on the screen. Thank you so much. I apologize. Our closed session has taken longer than we expected. We are once again extending till 8:15. We are on our last item. So our hope is we'll be out by eight, excuse me, 8:45. 8:45 will be out. Thank you everybody for your patience.
All right, ready? I'd like to say good evening to everyone and want to apologize that we're late. But welcome everyone to the meeting. We just ended closed session. To access translation of the agenda, click on the top of the webpage using the word English for translation into multiple languages. Meeting interpretation services are available in the Zoom by clicking on the globe icon at the bottom of the screen. I'm getting to them. Due to the ongoing COVID-19 crisis, the manner in which the Board of Education meetings are conducted has changed. Thank you in advance for your understanding and cooperation as we experiment with new ways to that the people business while allowing what a maximum participation and hearing to our values of respect and safety of the community. We have changed public comment format, which now occurs at the beginning of the meeting. Public comment will last for no more than one hour and includes any agendized and not agendized items. The time allotted for each speaker is two minutes. There is no yielding. There is no yielding of time, nor is it substitution of speaker permitted that on the agenda. Due to the Brown Act, members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. Now may we have a report out from closed session?
Thank you very much, Board President. We'd like to share that we had a unanimous vote for Guthrie Flashman as our new Director of Special Education Secondary. We'd also like to share out a unanimous vote, five yeses by our board for our new Director of Mentor Health Services being Arthur Harris. Also, I'd like to report out unanimous vote or yeses for our board for Aloney Elementary School Principal being Delicia Davis. And we, the board tabled the item, reassignment of elementary principal position. That item has been tabled. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Hurst. Now, we are moving on to be three to public comment. And if you're in the house, you need to fill out a public comment card and then for those online, you need to be in line to be ready to speak. All right, are we ready?
Our first public comment is Kim Chamberlain. Good evening. I'm Kimberly Chamberlain, IFTE Local 21 SSA Chapter President. I am also a district employee. I would like to give a good shout out to all of our schools and families for making our jobs easier by giving good communication to everyone by filling out their annual forms this year. Right now, we have almost 4,000 forms already filled out, which means that our communication tools will work even greater. So those parents and staff members that are really pushing it and helping us make sure we have those tools, thank you. I also want to give a little shout out to our families and staff that are going to be helping us collect for our educational benefits form. This is a wonderful form that helps students and families get more and more information. It is a pathway to the receiving the EBD debit card debit and getting after school programs at your school site, getting bus passes, lots and lots of information. Plus, it helps also when you're filling out those college application parents, even to trade schools. If you have applied for this and you can receive it, that means that you turn around and you are gonna get, and nine times out of 10, a discount. I know it helped quite a bit for my college students and my son who is in a trade school. So it really does make a difference out there in your world. And I'd also like to give little shout out to Mary Jones. Mary Jones was an SSA president for 17 years. She was a district employee for over 20 years. She had taught me the world. I lost her as rest of the WCCUSD community, her family, and she can't say enough about her. We wouldn't be where we are today without her and I would just like to say thank you, Mary. And the community in SSA thanks for everything she did to make us the union we are today and make sure that staff and clerical staff, office managers, custodians, anybody that walked through that door that had a question, she was there in HR. Helms, it was wonderful. So just a huge shout out and what a loss for our, our school system. Thank you. Our next public comment is Marlin Kanagi Muñoz.
Hello, my name is Marlin Kanagi Muñoz. I'm a parent of a fifth grader at Washington Elementary School. Before I begin speaking on what we need, I wanted to say thank you for what you have done so far. I started to advocate for the needs of our school kind of in a jaded place, given the lack of communication I had gotten at the school. It felt like nothing was going to change. I want to thank you, Dr. Hurst and Leslie Reckler. You both have been responsive and have followed up on our concerns and for that we are so grateful. We hope that you will vote to replace our principal with an individual that can better serve the Washington community. Our school is particularly demanding, given the dual language immersion component and the diversity of needs within the student body. Our current principal is not the right person for this job. We need a leader that can handle these intricacies with clear leadership and presence. Of note, this individual needs to make sense of the disarray that has occurred as a result of the leadership issues from the past year. Namely, we are down many teachers. My fifth grader does not have a teacher to start the school year off as far as I know. We've lost several qualified bilingual teachers and staff due to problems at our school and lack of leadership and lack of follow through. We are coming to ask for your continued communication. What is the plan for hiring? What will happen week one that my child doesn't have a teacher? What will happen week two that my child doesn't have a teacher? What will happen if my child doesn't have a teacher for a month? What do we do? So I hope you will continue to communicate with us on the status of these decisions. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Zalon Harrison.
Good evening, board. How you guys doing this evening? How good. I'm saying something on the board report and it said that some of your school sites did not have A-PACs. That's unacceptable. All the principals need to be aware that there need to be A-PACs at their sites. A-PAC has been started and approved by this board and the district and you guys need to make sure that every school site has an A-PAC for equity for Black parents to be involved in their children's education. Black students are your lowest performing students in your district. It's unacceptable for that to be on there and reported and principals not taking part in A-PACs. Please make sure that every school site has A-PACs for equity for Black kids. Also, I'm concerned about your school site plans. You need to make sure that all your school site plans represent Blacks children and what they need on those plans. We're not invisible and just because we don't have a boatload of parents up here, I'm speaking for all of them. I want to see on every school that we have in our district where taxpayers pay for their children to go and their grandchildren, that all parents have a voice on those plans. So please do not, Jamila's been asking about that. Can you guys verify that these things are happening? Are they just pretty things in writing? And for Black kids, that's what it's been, pretty things in writing with no deliverables. Please ensure that all kids have equity on those school site plans and that we, our Black parents have a space to give our voice. That has not been happening and there's no accountability. Principals are, oh, I didn't know. No, you're getting paid to know. All kids are your responsibility, including Black kids. So we want to ensure that that's happening and I will be back, as you guys know, for the Black kids. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Erica Cruz de Zavala.
Gracias. Muy buenas tardes, miembros de la Mesa Directiva Superintendente. Mi nombre es Erica Cruz de Zavala y hoy me dirijo ante ustedes por tres puntos. Hablo por las familias que no se sienten incluidas por no tener otro idioma que no sea el inglés. Ustedes tienen la obligación de proporcionar la traducción, no solo en persona, sino también en papel, para que todo padre pueda estar frente a ustedes y poder expresar sus inquietudes, sus dudas, estar todos integrados. Requerimos el apoyo para los maestros, el staff de este distrito que cuentan con un ambiente laboral digno, respetuoso, para no estar reclutando a cada vez maestros, en especial a maestros bilingües que no, porque no sabemos valorarlos. Por último, ustedes bien saben que hemos luchado durante más de una década sin un director bilingüe español-inglés en la escuela Washington para fortalecer, comunicar, promover y modelar el programa de doble inversión. Necesitamos ayuda, comenzar a curar las cicatrices del mal liderazgo que hemos enfrentado. Requerimos de una mejor dirección de la persona que esté acargo, que sepa, que entienda cómo es el proceso de ser un líder comprensible, aguerrido con el programa dual. Si vamos a crear programas en este distrito, tenemos que apoyarnos con recursos, fortalecernos, no menospreciarnos. Para poder llegar a tu comunidad, primero tienes que caminar por los senderos y ver las dificultades y las fortalezas que tienen. Porque si tu comunidad está bien, tus hijos también están bien. Muchísimas gracias y por favor ayuden a todos estos grupos y especialmente a mi escuela. Gracias.
And this is the translation for Zoom. My name is Erica Cruz de Zavala and today I address you with three points. I speak for families who do not feel included because they have a language other than English. You have the obligation to provide the translation, not only spoken, but also in writing so that every parent can be in front of you and be able to express their concerns and doubts. We require support for the teachers and staff of this district. They deserve a dignified and respectful work environment. So we know recruiting teachers every year, especially bilingual teachers, because we do know how to value them. And lastly, you will know that we have fought for more than a decade without a bilingual Spanish and English principal at Washington School. To strengthen, communicate, promote and model the DI program, we need to help begin the healing of the scars of bad leadership that we have faced. We need a better direction of the person in charge. And who knows and understands the process of being a leader, understandable and brave with our dual program. If we are going to create programs in this district, we have to support them with resources and strengthen them, not undermine them. In order to reach your community, you first have to walk on their shoes and see the difficulties and strengths that they have. Because if your community is fine, your children will be fine. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Ellie Vargas.
Good evening. I'm afraid already I'm not as eloquent as my friend Erica. But I'm very glad to be here in person. It's my first time ever coming to a board meeting in person. I'm glad to see you all here in person. And I thank you for your service to our children and this community. I especially want to thank you, Dr. Hurst, Trusty Phillips and Trusty Reckler for responding many times to my multiple emails over the last several years. It's very meaningful to me to get those responses back. My name is Ellie Vargas. I have a entering fifth grader and an entering second grader at Washington Elementary. I'm asking you to please support, I don't know what the words are, the motion, the action that's pending to move our current principal out of Washington. I have expressed these concerns chronically over the past year, so I'm not going to repeat them all and my friends are here to do the same. You have the undisputed support of the parents and the teachers and the staff to do so, so please do. What I really want to ask, what I feel the most concerned about is our teacher vacancies. We have, to my knowledge, no fifth grade teachers for my entering fifth grader. We are down at least one second grade teacher for my entering second grader. And last I heard, we're down two of three kindergarten teachers for these poor kids starting school. I don't get what's supposed to happen. Where are these kids going to be? Who's going to watch them? What are they going to be doing? How long is this going to last? As parents, we need to know what to expect to prepare our students, our children. And I'm fearful that they're going to be placed in the back of classrooms to teachers who are already struggling. Learning loss, we're trying to catch up from distance learning. Is this going to be a week? Is it going to be a month? Is it going to be through the end of the calendar year? What is the plan? Please, please let us know. I know there's lots of vacancies, but it's only fair to let us know what's going to happen and what to expect. Thank you.
Next public comment is Ivy Winston. Ivy Winston. Emma C. Davila.
Hello. I'm a mother of three kids at Washington. And I want to express my concern as well that I have an incoming kindergarten and an incoming fifth grade and both of those are, from what I hear, have no teachers. So that is very concerning for two of my kids to start the school year without a teacher. I had the experience this last school year where I had a sixth grader going in and for his four, three to four weeks of school had no teacher. He was bounced around sometimes in first grade for a day. Another day he had a substitute. Another day he was put in a different class, given a packet to complete, which was kind of just busy work. It wasn't collected at the end of the day. It wasn't reviewed. It was just thrown in the garbage at the end of the day. And that was really concerning for our first four weeks of the school year last year. So as you might expect, I'm not very pleased that two of my kids are starting this next lesson, two weeks without teachers in place. I don't, I really want to know what would you do in terms of kind of having that information and not knowing much about what, what the plan is? You know, is there a substitute? Is there a plan? Is there going to be some, something happening? So that we, when we, that we could tell our kids now or tell them what to expect. I'm a child psychologist. Kids need to know what's going to happen. It helps them feel safe, secure, and I can't give them that and I need to know what to tell them, what the first day is going to look like. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Kellen Hickman.
Hi, I also have two kids that go to Washington. I'm on the PTA and I volunteer there and I spent a lot of time in both of their classrooms. I'm also extremely concerned that they don't have teachers. that there are so many vacancies at our school. What makes me the saddest is that there will be kindergartners that will go on Friday in a week or so to go see who their teacher is. And there won't be a name listed perhaps, and that just makes me really sad. And also for my kids that perhaps will go and hoping to see who's in their class and who their teacher is and so I just really hope that you can figure something out because they're excited. I mean, they were excited to go back to school when, when we reopen school. It's, it's a, it is a great place. I do love Washington. I also, you know, it makes me sad that, that we have lost these teachers and I I do wonder if it has to do, and a lot of some staff, I do wonder if it has to do with the fact that the leadership this past year has not been amazing. And so I hope that you look into that as well. Thank you.
Our first public comment on Zoom is Francisco Ortiz. Please unmute yourself.
There it goes. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. Good evening, board members, Dr. Hurst, staff and community. My name is Francisco Ortiz and I'm a district alumni and fifth grade teacher on release to serve as a community schools organizer for United Teachers of Rhythm. I'm here today because I'm hopeful for the opportunity that district students, families, educators and our communities have before us as our district was awarded the fifth largest community school in the state from the California Department of Education. UTR worked in close collaboration with our district to secure these funds and looks forward to a continued partnership as we launch the next generation of community schools in West Contra Costa. These funds will support 22 existing community schools and five new community schools. According to the CDE, community school initiatives enable districts and schools to work closely with educators, students and families to understand and address the unique needs, assets and aspirations of the school community. This twenty-nine and a half million dollar grant is set to propel WCC USD into a transformative grassroots and democratic model for community schools that our students deserve. The transformative model rests on four research-based pillars. One is integrated student supports. Two, family and community engagement. Three, extended learning time and opportunities. And four, collaborative leadership practices for educators and administrators. One of the four proven practices in the CDE's community school framework is a community asset mapping and gap analysis, which all our schools will need to conduct across this school year. I implore that our district takes the time necessary to conduct a deep and strategic engagement process with a super majority of all interest holders to get a true reflection of our community's assets, needs and hopes, given the impacts of COVID on our communities and the current and dire staffing crisis at our schools. As a district, we can be successful when this equity strategy is followed from the bottom-up approach, centering the voices of all of our members of our school communities. We look forward to continued partnership and provide the schools for our students deserve. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Tara Fay. Please unmute yourself. Hello. Our next public comment is Anna Smolian. Please unmute yourself.
Hello. Good evening, Dr. Hurst and board members. My name is Anna Smolian. I had no choice but to teach adult ESL in person last year since I've only been with adult ed for sixteen years. Several of my colleagues have more seniority than me and therefore had first choice for teaching online. I decided to take a chance with COVID still a serious threat and was assigned to Dejane to teach intermediate high ESL, where I became fully engaged with the students, the staff and the classroom technology. The students were appreciative of the location and services offered to them. Before classes ended in June of this year, we, the ESL instructors, were asked for our preferences of where we wanted to teach and which level, whether online or in person. I do not understand why I was transferred over to Sarah Adult School. Why try to fix something that isn't broken? It feels like I'm being penalized for being a successful and productive teacher. Why send me to a low-attendance school and have a brand-new teacher take my place at Dejane? My students and I are opposed to the move to Sarah. In addition, there is another instructor at Sarah that is essentially teaching the same level as I would be. We were ousted by the Chinese immersion charter school and those of us in the trenches at adult ed don't see any reason to reestablish ourselves there at Sarah. This makes no sense whatsoever. Mr. Carr, the previous principal, was trying to reinstate our stake at a school that does not serve our community. Students who do not have cars would need to take a bus, which we know is an inadequate system in the East Bay, then walked up a large hill to take classes. Some of my students at Dejane would not be able to attend classes at Sarah since it would be too far for them to walk. Without students and teachers to teach those students, there would be no administration. It would be considerate to be given the respect that we deserve. Thank you so much.
Our next public comment is Maisha Harris Gash. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. So, hey, it's about time to go back to work. I'm still trying to get my rest. So tonight I'm going to share some things with you and it comes from one of our colleagues, Ms. Layman Rayford, exceptional sign language teacher at Pinot Valley High School. And she writes for the educators room. So going into this school year, I would like everybody to think about the five love languages and how it relates to teachers. And this is for admin and district staff. Words of affirmation. So say thank you, even to your not-so-favorite teachers for the little thing. Because kindness goes, it repeats itself, it extends itself. Acts of service. When you walk to a teacher's room and the students are like working like independently and quietly, hey, offer to watch the class for the teacher for a moment, be it she or he can go to the bathroom or just be able to step outside and woo-sah and just take the mask off and breathe. Or what about receiving gifts? So I kind of really couldn't figure this thing out, but as Ms. Layman said in her article, it's the thought behind the gift that really, that really counts. Quality time is often communicated as undivided attention. So with students, there should be authentic time built into our school schedules to have that time with our students. And finally, physical touch, which is, as she defined it, as to come into or come in contact with. So many teachers would welcome admin or district staff to teach their class for a day as a small reminder of how challenging it is to teach. So according to Ms. Layman's, because I want to give her her credit, give her her shout out. I did text her and let her know I was going to use her stuff, but I just thought it was so great and I wanted to share this with everybody in our community. So everybody have a wonderful blessed night. I look forward for our next time together.
Our next public comment is Tara Fay. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, can y'all hear me this time?
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you. Hello, Superintendent Hurst and board members. My name is Tara Fay and I am a teacher at Pinot Middle School. Today I want to speak with you about the importance of Resolution Number 2223-07 on holding virtual board meetings due to the COVID-19 state of emergency, as well as the importance of what this resolution represents. As elected members of the board, you are here to protect and amplify the voices of your constituents. Part of that responsibility is making sure those constituents have access to these meetings. As an immunocompromised person, I would have to endanger my health to attend these meetings in person. And over the course of pandemic, I have watched every single board meeting, which I would not have otherwise been able to do. If you don't believe this resolution is necessary, I ask you to examine the privilege from which your ability to take health risks comes. Some of us don't have that ability. So please, for my sake and the sake of your invested community members like me who deserve equitable access, please vote yes on this resolution. I'd also like to point out that the verbiage of this resolution maintains the ongoing state of emergency and the importance of mitigating health dangers to the community. This resolution would protect us from undue harm at meetings, but what about in our schools? Superintendent Hurst, you released your COVID-19 policy for this year on the district page and to your credit, it has been updated and improved over the past couple of days. So thank you. However, it still says that testing will not be available onsite at schools and that only disposable masks will be supplied for our students and staff. We need onsite testing weekly to ensure equitable access and to catch cases before they spread across entire classes and campuses. We need to ensure we aren't hit with another wave that causes illness and death in our community or leaves us even shorter on teachers when we're already understaffed, as is, as other speakers have noted. Lastly, thank you, Dr. Hurst, for having a community forum with the Pinot Middle School community tomorrow evening. We all look forward to working with you to see how we can help our amazing school community prosper. Thank you all for your time.
Our next public comment is Joseph Glazer. Please unmute yourself.
Okay, can you hear me? Okay, I'm on my phone. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, all right. So Joseph Glazer, History and English Seven at Hercules Middle. So as far as the new COVID policy goes, the good mandatory testing after a positive case and also masks available hopefully at each site, which is important. And hopefully that includes surgical and KN95 masks. There's something in there about a shortage of N95 masks. I'm not sure that's accurate. I think we need N95 masks as well at the sites. So what needs improvement is we need the indoor mask mandate to come back and regular optional testing at the sites weekly. We helped to prevent a lot of spread last year by catching cases early through this testing. Masks are a proven strategy to help prevent the spread of the virus. We're still in a pandemic with two to three thousand people dying weekly and we need to protect our immunocompromised community members. Also, my site Hercules Middle still has around five vacancies and also no assistant principal. What's the plan to fill these vacancies as well as the hundred-plus, maybe two-hundred-plus vacancies district-wide? Some ideas are a substantial salary increase for all employees and the state has just given record funding, so I'm pretty sure the money is available for that. Signing bonuses for all new hires as well as longevity bonuses for current employees to incentivize us not to leave because that would make this staffing crisis even worse. And after what we've been through the past few years, I think that would be the right thing to do to make sure more people don't leave because when you look at that list, there's a lot more people leaving than coming in being hired when you look at that attachment for the meeting. So we need to also increase the pay for substitutes as well as for when teachers take extra students or period sub because that's a huge inconvenience for us. This huge number of vacancies is obvious evidence that our educators have inadequate salary as well as working conditions. And so we need a substantial salary increase and improved working conditions, including COVID safety if we don't want to have more absences out and more people leaving like we did in January when half the school was gone, teachers and students. So also I support continuing board Zoom meetings. Is equity just a catchphrase or is it a meaningful policy? Yeah, that was my last thing. Is equity a catchphrase or a meaningful policy for this district? Thank you.
Our next public comment is Robert Mandel. Please unmute yourself.
Yes, good evening, board members. I'm an adult school ESL teacher. And in March, the board showed considerable leadership in refusing to issue March fifteenth letters and layoff notices. The kind of oversight you provided then, you need to provide in the adult ed program. As you know, we are four and a half years into negotiation and still have no contract. We just found out this week that four teachers lost their jobs because the district chose not to continue the CalWorks contract. Two other districts are doing it online, but for some reason, we couldn't. People need job training to get off CalWorks. One-third of our ESL staff has been transferred or reassigned against their wishes and against their student wishes, flying in the face of their expertise and having established viable classes. Where we've got a request at Nystrom to set up an ESL class. So far, no action's been taken on it. The superintendent said it was an accident and our union leaders were fired. Well, let's see some proof by abandoning the anti-union policies, signing a contract that meets student and teacher needs. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Don Gosney. Please unmute yourself.
With respect to you all, when you delay the start of the meeting for two and a half hours, do you really expect the public to sit and stare at their computer screens, hoping that you might return before the public has to retire for the evening? After the many delays, we had no real expectation that you would ever return. How many members of the public do you think would stick around? How many are still here? Any business that you conduct tonight is, for all intents and purposes, being held at a secret meeting because the public has moved on. Out of respect for the public, this board should cancel this meeting and defer all business to a meeting that can be held in a public setting where the public might expect to participate. We know that you had important business to conduct an executive session, but this was not your typical delay. And this is not the first nor the only time that you've delayed for the start of your meeting by several hours. What kind of message does this send to the public and students? It's disrespectful. Apologies are nice and appropriate, but when we see repeats of these delays, the apologies are hollow. This is not the way to conduct your business. What is the district's policy when an employee routinely shows up for work late or a student shows up two and a half hours late repeatedly? On the projects I used to manage, these actions would require severe actions. I'm surprised, though, that so many speakers stuck around, but the majority were district employees that needed a vent and the rest were parents that also needed a vent. That's a telling message right there. Thanks very much. I'm going to get myself some supper now.
Our next public comment is Lezha. Please unmute yourself and state your last name for the record.
Hi, my name is Lezha Borobok. I am talking tonight because I wanted to commend the board on, and hopefully encouraging you to continue to give to bright futures. It is a preschool and school and daycare for after-school for the kids. My son has been going there now for just a little over two months. And without the wonderful staff and what they've done with him, they have helped him work on being able to use his words. He has excelled as far as learning his letters, knowing how to write his name. Without the help of the board to help support that school and for the kids and the teachers, our community would be at a loss. I wish I had known about them with my first son. They are amazing and the funding that the board gives them is just, it helps keep daycare and childcare at a cost that we're able to actually afford. Where before, there were times when it was daycare or, you know, bills. So I just wanted to talk to the board and hopefully you will continue to help grant them grants and continue to support it. So thank you.
Our next public comment is Ken Ryan. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, board. President Christian, Dr. Hurst, my name is Ken Ryan. I'm the Adult School Teachers Union President. First, thank you for funding the older adults program. Second, I'm here to ask your help with another issue. Second, uh, I'm here to ask your help with another issue. Uh, last Friday, ASU sent the district a cease and desist letter to stop the layoff of four Adult Ed teachers. The teachers are laid off because the Adult School contract with Cow Works was ended early. The Adult Ed Program for Cow Works participants provides workplace literacy skills to people who are trying to get a job. ASU asked the board and the superintendent to look into restarting the Adult School Cow Works contract with the county in order to both continue to help Cow Works participants get the skills they need to get and keep a job as well as keep the four laid off Adult School teachers employed, as is there right under ed code. Thank you for your attention to this matter. And again, thank you for funding the older adults program.
Our next public speaker is Andre Schumay. Please unmute yourself.
Thank you to the president of the board, Mr. Christian, to our superintendent, Dr. Hurst, and to the distinguished members of the board. My name is Andre Schumay. I'm a school community outreach worker at Nice Room Elementary School. And I want to apologize. I've experienced a bad hair day today, so I couldn't be with you all tonight in public or in person. I come before you tonight to do a shout out to our food services department. Ms. Barbara Jellison is doing such an amazing job over there with it, with that department to meet the food insecurity needs of our students and families throughout this district. She's been doing it all school year. Uh, she's been doing it all throughout the summer. I was blessed to participate in an amazing C-Sase program at Dejane Middle School entitled Mastering My Skills Summer Camp. We reached out to Ms. Jellison to meet the food needs of those students. She stepped up and made it happen. For the past two weeks, going on the third week next week, we've been able to meet the food insecurity needs of families at Nice Room. So I just wanted to just do a shout out to let you all know that there are some, there are some things working within this district. And the Food Services Department is meeting an important need within this district. So I just pray that you all pay attention to what's going on in the Food Services Department. Uh, give Barbara Jellison the much deserved raise that she needs. Oh, did I say that? I'm sorry. Uh, but I, I just want to say, you all, she's doing an amazing job. And, and I tell you, the families that show up at Nice Room to get the food for the past two weeks, you should see the amazing smiles and hugs that they give me and my colleague, Ms. uh, Lardis Avila, because we're able to bless them with food. So a shout out to the Food Services Department and thank you all and continue to support that department. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Scotty Smith. Please unmute yourself.
Yes, good evening. Uh, first, I'd like to say it was disgusting in terms of the amount of time that you guys were in closed session this afternoon and only reported out, what, three? Maybe four things? Then that's, that's a serious problem. And now we, if you end at, uh, ten thirty as you normally do because you guys need to sleep and I need to sleep as well. Um, then this packed agenda will not be covered. The other thing I want to say is I want to talk about the FPM report. If you look at the first, bottom of the first page of that document, it says that this document should be given to the public upon request. I requested that document when it first came out. And it was never given to me. It was postponed. We wanted to take it to the board. And now finally you guys are getting the report. And I hope that you read that report very thoroughly because there are things in that report that needs to be dealt with in this district in terms of the site councils, in terms of the SPFA plans, which I want to talk about as well because you're bringing them slowly before the board. And it is not clear whether or not those plans after, after they have had their, uh, revisions have gone back to the site council for approval. And whether or not these plans have been just approved by the administration. So that is a serious complaint, uh, complaint that parents are having about how that process is taking place. The other thing, since we are lacking all of these employees in the district and parents do not know whether or not their kids will have a teacher. I would like to have data on the, uh, employee survey.
Please conclude your comment.
That is important. And one other thing, there needs to be a definition for the public about a Williams complaint because parents can file those complaints if there's no.
And our last public speaker is Ivy Winston. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, good evening. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I was there in person, but unfortunately I had to leave because of delay. And we also had quite a few parents that wanted to speak this evening, but unfortunately wasn't able to get the opportunity because of delay again of the meeting. But I wanted to just say that we had our last parent meeting for the school year, for our fiscal year, school year last week. And the unfortunate announcement was made to our parents that we're going to have to make a shift in our program and adjust their monetary part in keeping the program in existence. We've been here for the last twenty-six years. And we have throughout the last twenty-six years partnered with this district. We are a solution-driven organization. And we work earnestly in closing this academic achievement gap with our kids and has been very successful. So we are going to come to another board meeting because parents does have their concerns they want to express. And, um, I just hope that we can resolve these things as a unit for the, um, you know, for the sake of the kids. So with that being said, everyone have a good evening. Thank you.
Alright, I want to thank everyone who participated in public comment this for this evening. Thank you and appreciate you a, a lot. And now we will continue on with the agenda. And we're going to the agenda review and adoption. Any changes to the agenda?
Thank you, President Christian. Um, I am pulling some items after speaking with staff due to the timeliness of tonight. Uh, and these items will come back to the next meeting, um, if the board agrees. Um, first one from contracts on their C four, we are pulling performance fax. The contract specifically. It's called performance fax. Yes, thank you.
Any of the consented item, the consent items in the C, get pulled when we get to that item.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for, for clarifying. Then never mind. The pulled items will be E five, E eight, E nine, F one, F two, and F three. And the expectation that, uh, it will come back for the next board meeting if approved.
Okay. Are there any other changes to the agenda? One, one, going twice? Alright. If not, then we vote. Alright. Let's start it off with trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
Alright, thank you. Trustee Smith Bow.
Smith Bow, yes.
Alright, thank you. Uh, trustee Phillips.
Yes.
Alright, thank you. Clark Gonzalez Hoi.
Gonzalez, so yes.
Alright, thank you. And now we oh, and myself, I'm sorry. I'm gonna skip myself. And, and yes, I'm a yes as well. Alright. Um, in the interest of the board, at the time, uh, members will be limited to two minutes for questions and two minutes, uh, for comments. Uh, presenters that are presenting are asked to highlight their presentation and give brief, uh, information uh, as we proceed on. Alright. Now what we need to do, go ahead.
President Christian, I do have one request. I was wondering if for the superintendent's report, if we could, if you could increase our number of questions because we did not get a chance to ask questions before the board meeting on this one item. So on this one item, uh, if possible, could, could I request that we do four questions each? Um, just for the superintendent's report, which has all the, all the different parts about COVID and, uh, stuff and things like that.
Okay, we, we do four, four question.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Um.
President Christian, I have a point of order.
Okay, go ahead.
Will that report be broken up into sections or is the entire report, we have four questions for the entire report or four questions per section? Because it's broken down into sections. So what's the pleasure of the, the board? Are we doing four for the entire superintendent communication or four per section?
Four per session.
Sorry, President Christian, uh, if we could ask the superintendent how many sections there are? Because that might change your, your answer depending on the number of sessions.
Section.
Yeah, there's, there's several sections. I think there's at least, uh, five sections. We have COVID safety. Also update on, uh, virtual school and a couple of other items as well. I think there's about five sections.
Uh, trustee Smith Bow.
So if there's five sections, uh, the question would be, are we able to ask a maximum of four questions per section? That's what my question is.
Four. Four question. Yeah, per session.
Thank you. I believe what I heard, uh, was four questions per section.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alright, we'll, we'll continue over the agenda. Um, the approval of the minutes, we're gonna approve all the. Yeah, we approve all the minutes, uh, that's listed. Um, so I get it.
I'll approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second.
Alright, it's been moved by trustee Reckler, second by Clark Gonzalez Hoi. Alright, we to the vote. Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Alright, trustee Smith Bow.
Smith Bow, yes.
Alright, uh, trustee Phillips?
Yes.
Alright. Clark Gonzalez Hoi.
Gonzalez, so yes.
Alright, thank you. And myself a yes. Alright, thank you. Now we move on to see the business consent items.
Thank you, President Christian. I would like to pull out of C four just the performance fax contract or excuse me, table performance fax contract.
Alright, C four. Trustee Reckler?
I would like to pull from fundraising, SNAP raise, and I would like to pull that off the agenda.
Which one is that?
C two.
C two.
Fundraising activities. I'd like to pull SNAP raise off the agenda.
Okay.
I would also like to pull C ten for a separate action.
Alright.
And then I have a comment on consent.
Alright. Uh, what's the comment?
The comment is that I would like to challenge Dr. Hurst and his staff to step away from Amazon as a vendor if possible. I know it's only a million dollars, but if we can find a different way of buying that, I know it's convenient, but Jeff Bezos doesn't need our public money. Thank you.
Uh, trustee Smith Bow.
President Christian, I would like to pull, um, consent item six, please.
Okay. Alright. Alright, motion to approve, uh, this remaining, uh, the consent item?
I move that we approve the rest of the consent items.
Reckler will second.
Move by Clark Gonzalez Hoi, second by trustee Reckler, and we go to the vote. Uh, trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Alright, uh, trustee Smith Bow.
Smith Bow, yes.
Alright, thank you. Um, trustee Phillips?
Yeah.
Alright, thank you. Uh, Clark Gonzalez Hoi.
Gonzalez, so yes.
Alright, thank you. And, um, myself, yes. Alright, motion carries. And now we will proceed on. Um, D to superintendent, uh, communication.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can we bring up the presentation, please? Trustee Smith Bow is actually four components. The COVID updates, you're welcome, volunteer process, vacancy staffing, virtual school. If we can go to the next page, please. We wanted to start off with a memoriam. Um, first, Maurice Darnell Warwick was a substitute custodian. Wanted to acknowledge the community and to the board that he passed away. Mr. Warwick worked for the district since two thousand and three. Also, Ms. Chamberlain already mentioned Ms. Mary Jones, but we wanted to acknowledge Ms. Mary Jones, retired HR Senior Personnel Assistant. Passed away. Ms. Jones retired in two thousand and sixteen and returned to work as a retired sub employee shortly thereafter. Ms. Jones was a dedicated employee. She worked in the district for thirty-one years and also served as an SSA Union President for several years. She was a loving wife, mother, and a grandmother. Also, we want to remember Gonzalo Junior Sanchez was a student at Richmond High School, also passed away. Gonzalo was described as a positive, friendly, well-loved student who is naturally talented at playing the trumpet. Our thoughts and prayers go out to the family and friends in the loss of their loved ones. Thank you. Can we go to the next slide? We have several updates that we want to share, uh, with the board and with the community. And for the first one, we're going to turn it over to Mr. Booker.
Thank you, Superintendent Hurst. I want to thank the board and, uh, President Christian for giving me the opportunity to talk about COVID and our plan for COVID. Um, I'm going to briefly go over these slides. Um, I know you have questions, but we have a comprehensive plan. Um, and I should be able to answer most of your questions, but I'm just going to briefly go over these, uh, slides, uh, this evening. As far as our strategy goes, we are in line with the California Department of Public Health and our County Health, uh, Department. And the strategy that they use is the acronym smarter strategy. And that incorporates shots, mask, awareness, readiness, testing, education, and treatment. Uh, we will use this strategy moving forward. Uh, and as the guidance changes for CDPH or the county, uh, we will stay in line with that. Next slide, please. CDPH or the county, uh, we will stay in line with that. Next slide, please. We have a number of resources that we put on our website, uh, but as far as for our site leaders, we have our COVID quick guide. And in that COVID quick guide, it incorporates all things COVID. Um, and the site leaders use this as a, a reference, uh, if they, uh, have issues regarding COVID on their site. Um, if they don't have a clear understanding, we, uh, use or we support that site uh, with, uh, assisting them through the, uh, COVID process. Next slide, please. We do have a volunteer policy with regard to COVID. Uh, we want to make sure that volunteers on our site, um, are, um, properly vetted and have all the precautions necessary for COVID. I just want to highlight some of those, uh, things that they need in terms of, um, being cleared. And so when you look at our volunteer policy, um, the site leader has to approve, uh, that volunteer. And they have to adhere to our COVID protocols. Uh, that includes, uh, either a very vaccination verification or proof of a negative test within seventy-two hours. It also includes, uh, them going through the process through community engagement, um, for clearance. Um, they, uh, have to be cleared for events such as volunteering in the classroom, chaperoning a field trip or a day trip and having lunch in the school cafeteria. Next slide, please. As far as our schedule goes, moving into this school year, uh, we are proceeding forward with, uh, on August sixteenth and the nineteenth and August twenty-second through the twenty-sixth, our testing company, LSA, will conduct weekly testing at all school sites. Thereafter, LSA will only conduct group testing during the entire school year for ex- exposed groups at all sites. Can you go back to that? Thank you. Group testing will be, will be conducted between three and five days from the date of exposure at a school site, and this is only for exposed, uh, people on the site. School sites will also have at-home test kits available for students and staff upon request. Uh, we will limit those for each person. And then for school sites, we will distribute at-home test kits to students and staff before every major break. And so that would be breaks like Thanksgiving, uh, spring break, et cetera. Staff and students have the option of testing with their healthcare provider or the county health, uh, CVS or some other resource. Next slide, please. As far as our text testing option goes, we still have, uh, LSA available. Uh, there is a registration process. Uh, if you are registered, because there was an update to their system, you will still have to go into the system, uh, and check a box. Um, and that's all you have to do if you are already in the system. If, uh, you are not registered, you would have to go through the normal process. Uh, that registration process is on our website as well as, uh, it is available through the school site and the school site can assist with that registration. As far as notifications, we will continue our notifications, uh, through LSA and through our contact tracers. As far as screening testing goes, um, we will have, it says two sites, but we will actually have three sites. We haven't determined the third site. Uh, but that will be available for students, staff, and immediate family members. Uh, and this will occur at the district office, the, and the Alvarado School parking lot. That will be Monday through Friday, and that is from eight AM to four PM. Uh, and like I said, if you are registered with LSA, you can, uh, partake in that, uh, testing. As far as additional, uh, testing options, you have the covidtest.gov website where if you go to that website, you can get, uh, free antigen testing, which, uh, will be sent to your residence. Uh, school sites will also have, um, at-home test kits available, like I said, and they will be available to staff and students. Uh, any Kaiser member can go on the KP.org website and obtain free test. The county's test location is at, in Richmond at twenty-fifth and Nevin. That is open Monday through Friday, eight AM to three thirty PM. The only thing with them is that you have to schedule either online or through telephone. As well as the state, uh, testing location, which is in San Pablo at Contra Costa College. And they are open Sunday through Thursday, seven AM to three PM and four PM to seven PM, uh, on Friday. And that is also scheduling online or by telephone. Next slide, please. And finally, there's been some, uh, confusion as far as, uh, when there is an outbreak. An outbreak is just a signaler for the county, uh, that we have to contact, uh, them to, uh, collaborate with the superintendent. Uh, what the number three means is that's the number that signals that we have to contact the county and see if they have resources available that we can use in order to maintaining, uh, those schools being open.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt, however, it is ten PM and according to the agenda we adopted, at this point, any items remaining on the agenda that require immediate attention are now to be heard at this time and everything else will be tabled to another or to the following board, board meeting.
Thank you, Tammy. Are we allowed to make a motion to, or is it too late because we weren't paying attention to the time? Can I make a motion?
Okay, thank you. I make a motion that we extend the meeting until we finish the superintendent's report, the action items um, that are left and the consent items that were pulled.
I have a question before I make a motion. Um, Dr. Hurst, what on this agenda? Cause we really haven't done anything. What on this agenda is pressing that would qualify under the needs to be done? Immediate action.
So I did take a poll with staff while we were back. We actually had some staff, someone just talked to, um, the staff out here. Uh, the items that we pulled off at the very beginning were items that could wait for the next meeting. And talking with staff, these are the items needed to be on here for approval. So the items that were pulled at the very beginning of the agenda were the ones that we could afford to, that we're not pressing.
So, quick question, I mean, how do I put this? Everything on the agenda is pressing. I'm, I'm asking what has to be done tonight, not, not, you know, has to be done this evening, like has to not, we would like, it would be helpful, what has to be done?
Can you give me a second, sir? Okay.
And Dr. Hurst, if you want, I could ask for a recess for a couple of minutes for you to meet with your team.
President Christian? I had a, a point of order.
Go ahead.
I, I didn't know that the time had been up to second, uh, trustee Gonzalez Hoi's motion. I would have wanted to second that motion. Is it too late to second that motion because, uh, trustee Phillips made another motion? Is it too late to second that motion?
Yeah, that's what, um, Tammy said, uh, she says too late to second the motion.
Can I put another motion on the floor?
Okay.
So, um, I think Dr. Hurst is ready to answer the question.
So I'm talking to staff. Items E two, three, four, and six are essential. Two, three, four, and six.
So I would like to, I move that we stay until we finish items E two, three, four, and six.
All right. It was second?
I think.
President Christian.
The whole time.
President Christian, I would like to make a substitute motion. That.
Can I?
Trustee Reckler?
I probably shouldn't have, but I'm waiting here patiently to be recognized. I'd like to second the motion. Then I'm sorry, point of order. I do believe another motion can go on the floor. Is that correct?
So we do have the motion that trustee Phillips made that you've seconded. And I believe we got an announcement from the clerk that you wanted to also make a substitute motion. Okay.
Thank you so much, President Christian. Just to clarify, he had, uh, and he had looked at me to say that I could speak before. Um, I would like to make a substitute motion that we extend the meeting until we're done with E two, three, four, six, and the consent items that were pulled.
Trustee Gonzalez Hoi, are you willing to hear a friendly amendment?
Yes, but I think Tammy has that clarification. Oh, I'm sorry. And it's back to the trustee Phillips' motion plus the consent items.
Yes, it's not a substitute motion. It's just an amendment.
Oh, thank you.
Good motion.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, I have point of order. I believe there can be three motions on the floor. Is that correct?
The first motion that was made did not receive a second. So that motion no longer exists. So the motion that is on the floor is from trustee Phillips. They, that's the, our main motion, which is to do E two, three, four, and six. We have an amendment to that motion to include the consent items.
Yes, I believe it's possible to have three on the floor at a time. Is that correct? So if one dies, it's just dead. It's not a motion. So there could be three live at the same time. Okay, so I'd like to make another motion that we complete, uh, that we put a time limit on the agenda and that we stay until, um, eleven fifteen.
President Christian, I have a point of order.
Go ahead.
I asked if I could put another motion on the floor. I was denied that, or I was not, it, no answer was given to me. I did that right after we talked about what trustee Gonzalez Hoi motion. I said, I'm sorry, I didn't realize that that motion had died. I would have seconded that. May I put another motion on the floor? I was going to do that when President Philip was, uh, when trustee Phillips was speaking.
Okay. Yeah. Trustee Phillips had already been recognized to make the motion and was working out his motion, which is why you could not make a motion at that time.
Right, shouldn't the president have come back to me? Yes, you are correct, uh, parliamentarian. Shouldn't the president have come back to me after trustee Phillips was finished making the motion? As I said out loud, I would like to make another motion. What is the protocol?
The protocol that was that after the motion was made, uh, you, anyone could be recognized to make an amendment to that motion and those people that wish to be recognized for that at that time when they requested it were recognized.
So my hand has been up since before that. So what I'm asking, what I'm just trying to get real clear clarification about the order that we just, what just happened. Trustee Gonzalez Hoi made a motion. That motion died for a lack of a second. Trustee Phillips then, uh, said that he was making a motion in the middle of before trustee Phillips, I'm sorry, either before or when trustee Phillips was speaking, I asked, could another motion be made? The answer was no. That's the clarification. The answer was no. And then we moved on to trustee Phillips making his motion and then trustee Reckler asking, can a third motion be made? And the answer was yes.
Actually, there was trustee Phillips made his motion. An amendment was made to that motion.
Yes.
And then trustee Reckler has made an additional amendment to that motion. These are not new motions. We are dealing with one motion at one time.
Make, I make an, may I make an amendment to that motion that we're dealing with now?
At, at the moment, we have three on the floor, so let us deal with one. Once we dispose of that, then yes.
Eleven fifteen.
So we go backwards. We deal with the eleven fifteen. Are we limiting time until eleven fifteen? That does not have a discussion element to it nor requires two-thirds. So we need to go straight to a vote.
Straight to a vote. Okay. We go to the vote? Yes.
Can I ask a question? And this may expedite things. Is that okay? So I understand trustee Gonzalez Hoi wanted to add the consent items to my motion. And what I understand from trustee Reckler is that she's okay with my motion and your motion as long as it all ends by eleven fifteen, right? Okay.
Thank you. That's correct.
So if we can agree, we can just, but we could just do it. If we can just agree that trustee Gonzalez Hoi, um, it, the I, I don't even know it's a friendly amendment. It's a, it's I if I can just, I don't even know that it is an amendment. So I'm just, if I can just get it out, I don't even know that it is an amendment. If we're doing this in the order of E whatever, 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 and then consent, I'm fine with that. And we could just vote on it with, with all three of what we just said. And then if we run out of time at eleven fifteen, we just got as far as we got. I'm, I'm fine with what everybody said. Does that make sense?
It does. And in the parliamentary procedure world, what you've offered is a friendly amendment to the clerk's motion. And you and trustee Reckler are offering friendly amendments and, uh, asking the clerk to accept them, which would it be E two, E three, E four, E six, the consent agenda, and to end at eleven fifteen?
Would you accept that, Mr. Gonzalez Hoi?
Sorry, trustee Phillips, I'm just having a hard time because I don't think that we're gonna get to consent by eleven fifteen.
Okay, so you don't agree with the eleven fifteen?
I, I unfortunately don't know.
Okay.
Thank you, though.
President Christian, point of order.
Go ahead.
I too asked for a friendly amendment to be heard. I asked before, may I, may I offer a friendly amendment to the motion that the clerk put on the floor?
Unfortunately, we have three motions right now. So as I said, let's dispose of one and then you can make another one.
Did we not just dispose of the one that Mr. Phillips?
We have not voted. We need to vote on the, uh, a friendly amendment was offered to consolidate all the motions that are on the table. It was not accepted, so we still have three motions on the table. We need to go straight to the vote. And we start at the end, so the eleven fifteen.
Can you repeat the motion, please?
Oh, okay. The current motion, the last motion that was made was to end at eleven fifteen. So it would be for items E two, E three, four, E six, the consent items, and to end at eleven fifteen.
Okay. So we take it to the vote? All right. Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
All right, trustee Smith Paul?
Smith Falls, no.
All right. Uh, trustee Phillips?
Yeah.
You say yes or no?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Yeah.
All right. Uh, clerk Gonzalez Hoi?
No.
All right. And no.
So that portion fails. We now have room for another motion, and I believe trustee Smith Folls has already given notice that she'd like to do so.
Uh, trustee Smith Foll?
Thank you, President Christian. I would like to make a motion that we hear E two, three, four, six. And seven, and the consent items that were pulled. Thank you.
I will second.
All right. Now we go to the vote. Uh, trustee Reckler?
On that item.
On an item?
Reckler, no.
All right, trustee Smith Foll?
Smith Folls, yes.
All right.
Reckler, yes. I'm sorry, Reckler, no.
Okay. Reckler, no. Trustee Smith Foll?
Smith Folls is a yes.
Okay. Uh, trustee Phillips?
My vote is no.
All right. Clerk Gonzalez Hoi?
Gonzalez Hoi, yes.
All right. And I'm a yes. Motion passes.
So the primary motion that was made is now modified and includes consent. The consent items in number seven. So we are ready to move on. To item E. Two.
E two. Dr. Hurst.
So we'll have Dr. Greenwood, E two.
Good evening, board. We bring before you, uh, the recommendation for provisional intern permits, which allows the district to hire. Individuals who have not met subject matter competence requirement needed to enter an internship program. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Can somebody, preferably the board president or the superintendent. Apologize to the public in the sense that we came out really, really late. And now we're not even putting a time limit on how long we're gonna be here after the fact. I think this is extremely disrespectful. And if somebody could just apologize to the public, that would be really cool.
President Christian, point of order. Um, I would like, I would like to make a motion. Can I make a motion, Tammy? Um, I would like to make a motion that we actually hear the superintendent's report. Um, we forgot it from what we just motioned. Is that a possibility, Tammy? Even if we don't ask questions, it's what most of the public came here to listen to.
So we're currently on E two. Are you moving to add, to return to the superintendent report after E two?
Yes.
That's a proper motion, yes.
Smith Folls, second?
All right, now we go to the vote. Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
All right, trustee Smith Foll?
Smith Folls, yes.
All right. Trustee Phillips?
Abstain.
Right?
Gonzalez Hoi, yes.
All right. And yes. Motion pass.
Thank you.
E two? Do we need a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the provisional internship permits.
All right.
Reckler, second.
Second. All right. Now, now to the vote. Uh, trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yeah.
All right, trustee Smith Foll?
Smith Folls, yes.
All right, trustee Phillips?
Yes.
All right.
Gonzalez, so yes, thank you.
All right, and yes. Motion passes. All right. Superintendent Report.
So we are gonna bring the superintendent report back up, and from my understanding, Mr. President, we're just going through the superintendent report. I understand there's no questions. Is that correct, sir?
Correct, there's no questions.
If we could re, bring, if we could bring that back up. While we're bringing that up, I would like to just take the opportunity, uh, to, to provide an apology to the public. Uh, as we shared, uh, we, um, had items in the closed session. It took us longer than we thought to discuss those items, which made us come out. Uh, significantly later than we typically come out for the closed session. Uh, so that's why you hear the discussion about the topics and taking items off the agenda as well. So we just wanted to formally offer an apology to the public for our lateness and tardiness. At this time, we're gonna turn it back over to Mr. Booker. Uh, before we do that, Mr. President, do we get clarification on questions?
Clarification on question. Uh, here. There'll be no question.
I was just talking to Mr. President and just asking clarif, quick clarification if there's gonna be any questions. He said, no questions. So we're gonna turn over to Mr. Booker. And if you could finish the presentation and go straight into the safety presentation, sir.
Thank you. So as I said, the number three, uh, does not necessitate closing a classroom or a school. The only person that is capable of doing that or has the authority to do that is the superintendent. In collaboration with the county health officer. And that concludes the slides for this portion. So I'm gonna change gears and talk about general safety. Uh, so we have a, uh, safety plan, uh, that is in place for this coming year. Um, and we also have a resource guide that the site leaders, uh, will use. Uh, and it has all things related to safety on this safety quick guide. We also are putting information on our website that will help, uh, families with. Our, our safety plan for the, the coming year. Next slide, please. We currently have a safety, a school safety tracker. And in this tracker, it has all the information related to safety. Uh, but specifically, we have, um. Information for the principals or the site leaders that if they click on, uh, their site. There is a folder with all safety information, uh, that they need to effectively keep their, uh, site safe. Um, so this is available to them. We also have given them, um, a presentation. At the, uh, management advance, we will continue to support them throughout the year. With, uh, safety, uh, presentations, uh, as well as the required training from the CDE. Next slide, please. Like I said, we have a, um. Physical safety plan, but before I talk about this, I wanna state that as part of our strategy. Uh, there is a prevention, uh, preparedness, a response, and a recovery that we use as a continuum. Part of the prevention strategy that we use for our sites is that we incorporate, uh, SEL, uh, PBIS. As well as restorative practices. Uh, that should enhance the strategies that we incorporate on a physical level. Uh, and should help with, uh, keeping these campuses safe for the coming year. I won't go into great detail about the physical safety plan, but there is a link attached to the, the slide. But I will, uh, name some of the stuff that is in that physical, uh, safety plan. We talk about limiting points of access onto campus or one point of access. We talk about lanyards and IDs. We have a, a ID badge policy. Um, we also enforce our closed campus policy. We will have a visitor sign-in procedures, uh, and, uh, each site will require that all visitors on campus sign into their site. We, uh, are doing facility assessments, our risk or safety assessments for each site. Uh, the district safety department is, uh, responsible for that. Uh, we are utilizing at the secondary level, the supervisors, uh, the campus safety supervisors to assist with those assessments. Before school starts, all schools should have a assessment that we can go over with the, the principals and support them. In keeping those campuses safe. We also, uh, will continue to do use event operations plans, and those operation plans have to be approved at the district level. We also will use a strategy that we incorporated, uh, at the end of last, uh, school year, uh, but it's the see something, say something. Program that we will use where it's basically anonymous reporting, uh, for people that want to. Report something that is going on, on a school site. Uh, that number is eight hundred seven six two seven four six three. As far as improved, uh, site supervision protocols. At the secondary level, our campus safety specialists will be more visible, uh, and have coverages. That will, uh, be given out by the supervisor. And they will work in a co, kind of a quadrant, um. Plan that will make sure that, uh, they have maximized coverages in the areas that they need to be in. The campus safety, uh, specialists, uh, will also be supervised, uh, which we started last year. Uh, community-based organizations and teachers, uh, the expectation is that they be more visible this year. Um, we wanna make sure that we improve our, our CS, uh, and student communications. We also wanna reduce foot traffic during school instructional hours. And then finally, which is a CDE mandate, we wanna update our comprehensive, uh, site safety plans. Um, and make sure that they have a complete understanding of the safety plans of moving forward. Those are just some of the strategies that are incorporated in this plan. It's much more comprehensive, but I, I, for the sake of time, I'm, I'm gonna go to the next slide. Like I said, in the comprehensive site safety plans, we have due dates. Um, but they must review these plans with, uh, staff that includes all staff on sites. And their SSCs and any public safety agency, uh, to get their input, uh, regarding these plans. All staff should understand their roles, uh, in this safety plan. And they should solicit input from stakeholders, like I said, the SSC, public safety agencies. Uh, once those plans, uh, have been completed and sent to the district, uh, office for approval. Uh, they should make a hard copy of this plan and store it on site, which is also a requirement. This is a living document, so there will be pretty periodic review and revision if needed. Ultimately, those plans have to, to go to, uh, the school board, uh, for approval. Next slide. And finally, we have a drill calendar, uh, which is automated. It's a system that once a drill is done at a site, there is a Google form that is completed and submitted. That information then comes to a spreadsheet, which the district safety department holds. Uh, so we know throughout the year who has completed their required drills. We also have our prestigious page, which explains to the site leaders how and when they should be doing these drills. And then in those drills or exercises, they should define what a CSS or staff member role is in that drill. And then students should have clear direction for a drill. So it's one thing to, to do the drill, but the students and staff should have an understanding on why they are doing these drills. Uh, so that is, uh, part of our strategy this year, um, and next slide. And, uh, that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. And at this time, we're gonna turn over to Dr. Greenwood.
Good evening again. This describes our current reality as far as staffing. For certificated, as you can see, we have forty elementary openings. Seventy secondary openings and thirty-three special ed openings. For our, uh, paraprofessionals, we have one hundred and fifty. Next slide. Our high priority schools for elementary for hiring is Bayview, Lincoln, Mare Vista, Perrys, and Washington. Secondary, um, Hercules Middle, and I wanted to take off Elster Widdle because they've made some, um, offers. And so they fall off the list, Hercules High and Kennedy High. And the reason that we have these schools listed as high priority because they have five or more vacancies. Next slide. And as you can see, the list by site and what, uh, grade level for elementary, you can go to the next slide, please. It's two pages, two slides for elementary. And then the next slide for secondary. So you can see all the openings. And then the next slide for a special ed. Next slide. So here we discuss our plan. So HR, we are currently running a list of individuals that we can move into, into the sites. We are reviewing the numbers of how many substitutes we can have ready for the first day of school. So right now, the number looks like we have a hundred ready in our pool. But I want you to understand as, um, community members and board members that, um, subs, um, because they don't belong to any unions. They have the right to go wherever they would like to. So even with all of these openings, we cannot force them or place them. In the sites that we feel that are the high priority. We wanna make sure that the sites, make sure that all their absences are put into our e-school system. So that when we run the vacancies list, we can determine where the needs are the greatest before school starts. So I have my technicians working on that now to contact the school sites, the office managers and the secretaries. To make sure that they have inputted their absences as early as, as knowledgeable that they know. Uh, we're also looking at grad tutors to figure out how to make them subs. We've also met with WCCA regarding A, AP, MVP moving temporarily into the classroom as a possibility. Also, we're gonna meet with the, uh, UTR regarding class size and taking on additional students temporarily. Next slide. Um, also increasing the size of the staffing, uh, solutions team, um, that's a high priority. We're gonna be setting up meetings for that. And meeting daily starting Friday. Um, we're gonna, uh, also reach out to CTA to see if there's other student teaching credentialing programs that we have not contacted. Um, to see if we can, uh, get some more candidates. Also review legislation for bringing back teachers who are retired. I have somebody researching that as well at this time. Option to explore the, the start of the school year, a remote option. And also option of high school teachers willing to take additional students. And also option of high school teachers willing to take additional students online via Zoom, so that we would have to meet with UTR about. Limited for certain kind of classes. Next slide. So we've developed partnerships with local universities for our teacher preparation programs to look at opportunities to grow our own. The county office of Ed for Contra Costa has partnered with us, Norma Gonzalez, the HR superintendent. She's assisting us with credentialing, application processing, and testing. So we really appreciate that support. We always have partnered with Teach for America, Cal State East Bay, and our new partnership, Holy Names University. Next slide. Recruitment strategy. So we've had several job fairs. They've been kind of hit and miss, but we think they are still beneficial. So we're going to do one on August thirteenth with the, and try to recruit teachers, classify substitutes, whoever we can get in here and get them processed as quick as we can with all the support that we have. So the location is to be determined. HR is already going to be starting to sign up for recruitment fairs in September because that's when they usually start emailing us or we contact them. Our teacher residency programs. We have a special ed present, which is in our fourth year. And next year, we have started a pathway for general education, and that's our partnership with Holy Names University. And so I'm looking, I'm really excited because we have a coordinator of teacher residency to oversee that process. And so we're, this is where we really want to try to grow our own and build up our community members and see who's interested in becoming a part of WCCUSD. And then our teacher induction program, that's where we have been really been able to dangle that carrot when we're out recruiting for teachers because this helps people clear their credential. And so, and it's a two-year process. And so it's really beneficial that we help teachers, and that's one of the things that when we're out recruiting, they want to know what supports do I get and what, if I come to West Contra Costa. So our induction program is very important to people to know that they have that kind of support for two years as a new teacher coming into West Contra Costa. Next slide. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Greenwood. At this time, we'll turn over to our chief academic officer for virtual academy updates, Ms. Martin.
Good evening, Board, parents, community, and Dr. Hurst. I am going to go over some updates on virtual academy. I'm going to be reading as if I am Principal McCormick because these updates came directly from her. So for glows of twenty-one, twenty-two, some things that went well. We have amazing students and families. We built a wonderful and committed staff. Students built and participated in a weather balloon launch. We hosted three successful end-of-the-year parties and meet and greets. They held monthly parent meetings and outreach. Therapeutically supportive environment for students. They also launched virtual clubs. Next slide, please. For areas of growth in twenty-one, twenty-two, we expanded rapidly, which meant that we were hiring and training teachers all year. There was more need than we could have initially, than we could initially serve. We learned a lot about training teachers for independent study online and adjusted the model as we went. Our research teachers were not local, so we couldn't do in-person meetings with students. Next slide, please. Excitement for twenty-two, twenty-three. RSP team is local and we are incorporating more in-person support. Staff is aligned to set school-wide expectation and a positive tone. They held their first Fab Lab camp this summer for students. It was a great experience and helped them build relationships. More virtual clubs will be coming and in-person SEL opportunities. We know more now than we did a year ago. I also wanted to provide an update on enrollment for the virtual academy. So currently they have enrollment of three hundred and fifty-three students. And you, I also had it broken down by grade level and the number of students that are in each grade. Thank you.
Thank you, Board. Mr. President, that concludes our superintendent report.
All right, and thank you. And now we go to E three. Education code.
We just Dr. Greenwood.
Good evening again. And so we're recommending for variable term waivers, which provide applicants an additional time to complete their requirements for their credential in which the individual who either holds an appropriate credential.
Did he get a motion? Uh, Clark, it's others.
Thank you, President Christian. I move that we approve the variable term waivers.
All right, it's been moved.
Reckler will second.
It's second by Reckler. And now we go to the vote. Trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
Trustee Smith Foe.
Smith Foe, yes.
All right. Trustee Phillips.
Yes.
All right. Clark Gonzalez Hoi.
Gonzalez, so yes.
All right, and I'm a Christian to yes. All right, motion passes. And now we go to E four.
Also, Dr. Greenwood.
Again, we would like to recommend for teacher consent authorization. This allows the teacher to teach a single subject or eight, have eighteen semester units of coursework or nine semester hours of upper division or graduate coursework or multiple subject class for sixty semester hours. Thank you.
All right. Uh, Clark, it's others.
Thank you, President Christian. I move that we approve the teacher consent authorizations.
All right, it's been moved. Is there a second?
Reckler will second.
Reckler second. And now to the vote.
President Christian, may I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
Dr. Greenwood, with the teacher consent authorization and with the variable waivers and the PIP, are we offering the teachers that kind of fall into those categories? Are we offering them kind of additional help? Because we all know that teaching is a skill, right? It's a skill that's needed on many levels and those hours that teachers put in and teacher college or internships or all of the things that you need before you get your full credential are necessary. Has the district talked about making sure that we're offering those types of supports to these teachers that fall into kind of these specialized categories?
Um, it goes case by case, but generally if teachers reach out to ask for support, this is where I can tap into the teacher induction program because they have mentors in that program that assist us with those teachers that need those extra supports.
Thank you for that. President Christian, I'm complete.
All right, thank you. Yeah, all right, we go to the vote. All right, trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
All right, trustee Smith Foe.
Smith Foe, yes.
All right, trustee Phillips.
Yeah.
All right.
Gonzalez, so yes.
All right, thank you. And I'm a yes. Right? Motion passes. Now we go to E six.
Also, Dr. Greenwood.
Um, this, we're asking you requested to vote for Mr. Mancing for board action approval for him being a voting representative on behalf of West Contra Costa Unified School District at the Contra Costa County Adult Education Consortium, CPAC, CCPAC.
All right, sir, motion.
President Christian, I'll move that we appoint President Mancing to be a voting member of the Contra Costa County Adult Education Consortium.
All right, is there a second?
Reckler will second.
Reckler second. And now to the vote.
President Christian, I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Dr. Greenwood, does this appointment have to be the principal of the school? Is that just typical or does it have to be the principal? Can it be another member of the student or the teaching body or staff body of the school?
As far as I know, it's always been the principal of adult ed.
Thank you.
All right. Now we go to the vote. Well. Did I call it out? Uh, trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
All right, trustee Smith Foe.
Smith Foe's exchange.
All right. Trustee Phillips.
Yeah.
All right, Clark, this is others.
Gonzalez, so yes.
All right, and I'm a yes. Motion passes. Now we go to E seven.
Yes, Board President, Board members and community members have come to me, emailed me as well, have requested to rename the sports complex at Hercules High School in honor of Coach G or Gerald Montgomery. The recommendation you have before you is to appoint an ad hoc committee. Consider renaming the sports complex at Hercules High School after Coach Gerald Montgomery.
Did you have a question, trustee Phillips, or were you going to make a motion? I was going to make a motion. Did you have a question?
I was going to do both, but go ahead.
Okay. Um, I'll move that we create the committee and appoint trustee Smith Foe as chair and President Christian as a member of the committee.
Second.
Uh, trustee Phillips, I'm sorry.
A second, but I had a question.
All right.
Can we also appoint a committee on the potential renaming of Lake? Because community members have reached out about that as well. And if we can, I would like to be on the committee.
Trustee Phillips, we discussed it in agenda sitting and we said we were going to put it on the agenda for a future agenda so that we can create the committee.
Thank you.
Yeah, we didn't have it in this one because of the urgency of this one, but we are going to put it on the.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Uh, we go to the vote.
President Christian, may I make a comment?
Uh, go ahead.
I just wanted to read a quick statement from the family and I want to thank you, Board, for creating this committee, this subcommittee. The family statement is Gerald was dedicated, loving, selfless man. His greatest pride and pleasure came from his family, but his school community was a close second. He dedicated the last seventeen years of his life to coaching and mentoring the students of Hercules High School. He did not reserve his interaction to athletes, but included all Hercules High School students he came into contact with. Gerald's commitment and dedication to the having students reach their full potential allowed him to achieve league titles in all three sports that he coached, football, baseball, and basketball. He also led his football team to the NCS championship in twenty seventeen for the first and only time in the history of the school football program. Just two more paragraphs. Gerald did not only focus on winning on the field, but also in the classroom. He is, he consistently had after-school study hall programs all year long to provide support and time for students to compete their, to complete their homework and to get additional assistance. The result of this program was a graduation rate of, for athletes who participated of over ninety percent. Some years, no one missed graduating. I could continue on and on with my personal testament of my husband. This is from his wife Shannon Montgomery. But I believe the outpouring of support shown at his memorial service at the football field speaks volumes and shows the impact he had on a generation of young people and parents alike. I ask that you give your full consideration to naming the sports complex at Hercules High School in his honor. I believe this is well deserved and he will, and will be well received by all those who knew him. Again, thank you, Board, for allowing this to go forward and I look forward to working with President Christian on bringing this motion back to the Board for action. I'm complete, President Christian.
All right, thank you. And now we go to the vote. Uh, trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
All right, trustee Smith Foe.
Uh, trustee Gonzalez Hoi, thank you for the recommendation and my vote is yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, trustee Phillips.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Uh, Clark, this is others.
Gonzalez, so yes.
All right, thank you. And I'm a yes. Motion passes. We're on consent item. C four. Trustee Reckler.
I'm sorry, we're on C four. I don't have anything for C four. I have C ten.
We pulled up agenda, an item from C two and C four, so maybe that's where the confusion happened.
So for C two, I asked that snap raise be removed from the agenda, so I guess in that vote, it was removed from the agenda, correct? Okay. C four, I don't have anything to do with. And then do you want me to discuss C ten? No. Okay, thank you.
President Christian, point of order.
Yeah, what's your point of order?
Trustee Reckler, if I'm remembering correctly, didn't you want to pull one of the specific contracts out of C four? That's what I thought I heard. Is that, was that not the case? That was trustee Gonzalez Hoi?
No, the superintendent pulled C, pulled performance fact off the agenda is my recollection.
Thank you.
Someone pulled C six. Go ahead.
President Christian, I pulled C four, but we pulled that out of, out of the agenda completely. Um, so just to clarify.
Thank you.
All right, so we're going to C six now.
President Christian, I pulled C six. I pulled it just for a board vote, please.
Okay, so. Okay, so C six has been pulled. A motion for C six. A motion to approve C six. Oh, Clark, this is.
President Christian, I move that we approve C six.
All right, it's been moved. Is there a second?
Reckler will second.
All right, second.
Is it open for a comment? Open for a comment.
Um, go ahead.
I pulled C six because it was a red flag in us having a contract with this company. Um, I've discussed this with Dr. Hurst. Dr. Hurst, you know exactly what I'm referring to. I do not believe that all members of this company should be able to participate with our district. Thank you. So my vote will be no. I'm complete, President Christian. I'm ready to vote when you are.
All right. Uh, trustee Reckler and trustee Phillips. Trustee Reckler.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to wait and make sure that something else wasn't going on. Um, I just wanted to say this is a very, very expensive contract. It's four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Um, it's a truancy management system and attendance management system. I want to really make sure that you hit your, your AMO's on this, which is you're looking at between four and six percent increase in attendance. Is that correct?
The, the research-based empirical evidence that was provided by SNA in the, in the package when we were talking about using a positive intervention strategies in addition to the truancy package that we already use with the SNA uh, did, did show a four to six and a half percent increase in attendance as a result of the positive interventions. Uh, this is a multi-year contract, so one of the things that we would put in place is, is review in January and April. So if the numbers aren't there for the future years, we would cancel the contract and not continue at the expense moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Um, is there a motion on the floor on this? There is. Okay, would you accept a, an amendment? Is that we get an update in January on how this is going?
Yes, I do accept that amendment. I don't know who was second in my motion, but I, I would accept it.
Ms. Tammy, is that all acceptable? Okay, thank you.
As long as the secondary also accepts the amendment. And I believe, wasn't it you that seconded?
Yeah, I thought it was trustee, trustee Reckler. I thought you seconded my motion.
Yeah, I did. That's right. Yeah, I did. That's right.
Trustee Phillips.
Mr. Chair, if she would, I would actually like to hear trustee Smith Foul's concerns.
I don't have a problem telling you my concerns. Uh trustee Phillips, I don't know if Dr. Hurst legally, can I name names or no?
Yes, you can.
I don't want this contract because I don't want Tony Ward anywhere near the district. I'm complete.
Thank you. I would like to take my motion back and ask that we table this item. Well, I can't table. So do we have, can we only vote it up and down at this point?
Trustee Phillips.
So. After I heard that. I actually was going to make the same motion that Mr. Gonzalez Hoi made. And I do not understand why we can't have a motion to table. Can you explain that?
So if you make a motion to table, then this is just gonna move forward. Or if you make a motion to vote, you vote up. Up or down. What he, how is that different?
You know, if we table this, as in we don't take it up this evening, how does it move forward?
Okay, so. His original question to me was, can he take that? No, if you want to make a motion to. Table this and yes, go ahead and make a motion to table.
Well, he said that I'm gonna second his motion to table.
Table, not.
Table.
Take back. Two different motions.
That's right. Thank you, trustee Phillips.
So are you making a motion to table?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, uh my motion was to table this item.
And I'm seconding that. Trustee Smith, well. Mr. Chair, I would also like to thank trustee Smith Foul for um. That.
You're welcome, trustee uh Phillips.
All right. All right, so uh. Now we go to the vote. Trustee Reckler.
Reckler, no.
All right, trustee Smith Foul.
Smith Foul's, yes, to table.
All right, trustee uh. Phillips.
Yes.
All right.
Uh Gonzalez, so yes.
All right. Christian, yes. Motion pass. C ten.
Okay, thank you. I pulled C ten because of public comment. And so I just want to ensure. Once again, that people understand what this is. And so to Dr. Hurst, if C ten. If there's a no vote. Does that mean that the meetings are no longer virtual and that everybody needs to show up in public?
No, ma'am, it's not.
Would you please be able to explain what this means?
So first of all, we we put it on here on the agenda, even though it was on the last agenda because it's a thirty-day. Uh come before the board requ- requirement and we know that our next board meeting is not until. The end of August or would have expired. So we needed to bring this back to the board. And if it is a no vote, it just simply means we still can continue with Zoom. And we would just have to make sure that if there's a board member that's not present, that we would have to publish. Uh their information on the agenda. And post a notice on where they are as well.
Thank you.
All right. Motion.
President Christian, I move that we. Sorry, that we uh move resolution two to. Two, three dash zero seven, District Board of Education meeting during the state of emergency arising from COVID nineteen.
I'll second that.
All right, and now it's been seconded and we go to the vote. Uh trustee Reckler.
Reckler, no.
Uh trustees. Smith Foul.
Smith Foul's, yes.
All right, trustee Phillips. All right.
Gonzalez, so yes.
All right. And I'm. Motion pass. Okay, um. We have come to the end and we adjourned the meeting at ten fifty-nine.